Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Advocates for Angels Wednesday Night Town Hall Meeting. I'm Valerie Aprahemi in the IEP Navigator, and I help parents get the special education program. Their child needs to thrive both in school and in life after high school. So tonight, I'm going to give you some more great legal grounds on dealing with the virtual schooling and the situation with special education today. So this is going to help you not only with if your child is in virtual, remote, a hybrid program, or even if they go back to school, the brick and mortar building. This is going to assist you. It is a fairly new regulation that is by the Education Code, so it's California Ed Code Regulation. And I'm going to give it to you. So if you guys have a pencil and paper, you should write this down. It's Education Code 56366.1 and then small a in parentheses, and it was amended by A B 1172. So that is the legal code that you're going to cite. And it basically is a new law that is, or it's a new code that is within these California Education Code. And parents, if any of you are not in California, I'm pretty confident that your state has also enacted some type of new amendment like this to require school districts to train all personnel that works with students with any type of behavior that impedes their ability to access the curriculum. Now, I don't know if any IEP kid that their behavior doesn't impede them from accessing the curriculum. I mean, most kids that have some sort of deficit disability diagnosis, they are going to have issues with behavior. And I'm not talking about, you know, maladaptive behaviors or self-harming behaviors or, you know, but it can be maladaptive or self-harming, but I'm talking about behaviors can be parents. Anything that's going to impede your child from accessing the curriculum. So it could be attention. It could be sensory deficits. It could be the fact that they have an auditory processing deficit and they can't process the work fast enough or the incoming verbal instructions fast enough to keep up with the curriculum. It could be a vision processing issue. It could be speech and language. It could be basically anything, any deficit that your child has is basically impeding your child. And it can be termed a behavior because if your child can't stay on task, they can't follow directions, they can't be independent, they are not successful in doing the work and accessing curriculum. In other words, learning, receiving educational benefit, learning, progressing towards their goals from year to year, that is impeding them from accessing the curriculum, parents. So what this says is that commencing with the 2020-2021 school year, documentation that every local educational agency will train staff who will have contact or interaction with pupils during the school day in the use of evidence-based practices and interventions specific to unique behavioral needs. The training shall be provided within 30 days of employment to new staff members who have any contact or interaction with pupils during the school day and annually to all staff who have any contact or interaction with pupils during the school day. So, and this is due on October 1st. Every school district must show verification that all the staff working with kiddos, basically on IEPs, must be trained in evidence-based practices. So they've now made it mandatory that all IEP staff, and if your child's in a general education class, then the general education teacher needs to take the training too. And they have to show verification that the training has been completed by October 1st. And they have to provide it to the California State Department of Education. So that's pretty strong that the state is requiring school districts to take more accountability to train their staff to understand how to work with kids on IEPs and kids that have any kind of behavior that impedes their ability to learn. So this, and it must, so these are the requirements for that training. The training must be conducted by persons licensed or certified in fields related to evidence-based practices and interventions being taught. That must be taught in a manner consistent with the development and implementation of individualized education programs. And it must be consistent with the requirements of Article 5.2 of Chapter 6 of Part 27 relating to pupil discipline. So, and that's also a part of California Ed Code. And so, which basically is saying that kids on IEPs that have behavior issues, they should not be disciplined the same way that general education kids are disciplined. Positive behavior interventions must be enforced and provided to the child instead of punitive disciplinary actions. Okay, parents? So discipline is a huge, another whole animal, another whole conversation. But the training includes discipline of those students and how the appropriate way to provide positive behavioral interventions for discipline. And so that is really the overall content of what I wanted to... Well, let me just give you these other three points, because these are good points. Positive behavioral interaction and supports, including collection, analysis, and use of data to inform, plan, and implement behavioral supports. So they must also provide, like I was saying, the positive behavioral intervention with supports, including the collection of data, collection, analysis, and planning and implementing behavioral supports. So that's also related to how you would provide behavioral intervention. How to understand and address challenging behaviors, including evidence-based practices for preventing those behaviors? So that means they must look at the antecedent, what happened before the behavior, so they can catch it before the behavior even occurs, part of evidence-based practices. And then evidence-based interventions for reducing and replacing challenging behaviors, including de-escalation of behaviors techniques. So all that has to do with evidence-based practices on how to work with kiddos with behaviors, how to de-escalate them, how to support them so that the behavior doesn't even occur, know the antecedents, and how to take data collection and plan and implement the supports needed for each child. So that is pretty huge, guys. And so October 1st, we passed it. So now you can ask your local, your IEP team, or you, all you have to do is write a letter. If you don't have an IP meeting coming up, and you need to say, "I am requesting verification that Education Code 56366.1" small a in parentheses, amended by A B 1172 for the behavior training verification that all of my IEP team have completed that training, and I want to see the verification that new school district submitted to the California State of Education, the California Department of Education, that they gave to them confirming that all people took part in that training. Okay, so that's my big tip of the day for tonight, parents. Okay, so my big pick of tip of the day, and it's pretty huge. Because finally, I mean, it's about time. They should have done this a long time ago. I mean, the majority of my cases, this is what we run up against, is that the team is not trained in how to work with kiddos with autism, and how to work with kiddos with behavior, and how to teach kids with disabilities. They just, they go to school, they learn how to be a teacher, they learn how to, you know, specialized academic instruction, speech and language pathologists don't learn how to deal with behavior, occupational therapists don't learn how to deal, they don't learn how to deal with behavior. That's evidence-based practices, which the only staff that know evidence-based practices are the ABA or autism specialists, because that's what they do. Autism specialists are behavioralists or trained in evidence-based practices. They would be the only ones that took any training in behavior intervention. So now psychs, psychs know a little bit more about it, because psychs do have to write behavior intervention plans. So psychs, but you don't have a psych at your meeting every single time you go to an IP meeting? There's not psychs around. But the psychs will come in, they'll write the behavior plan, and then they'll go, "Here, IP team, here's the behavior plan," and then you never see them again. And then it's never implemented. No one ever does it. No one even understands how to do it. Even though the psych is responsible to train the team on how to implement it and how to do it, that never happens. They never do it. They don't implement behavior intervention plans. I've caught them so many times at IP meetings when, at an annual comes up, and then I'll say, then we'll go through the annual, and I'll say, "Wait a minute. What about the behavior intervention plan? We have to review that, and we have to amend it if necessary, and we have to discuss if it was successful last year." And I see everybody's face go white, because they never even knew there was a behavior intervention plan for the whole school year, and they never implemented it. They didn't even know there was one in the IP. That's about how much they respect a behavior intervention plan, which is a violation of non-implementation of your child's IEP. So, you know, this is just some of the things that the IEP, guys, it's just so many components to it that, you know, help your child to be successful. When these things are actually done properly, the training is provided to the team, and the implementation occurs, and the supervision for accountability is provided and enforced. And most of those things are never done and are never done. And that's why I train you guys and to empower you to know these things, to have knowledge of these things, so you can hold them accountable to doing the right thing. When, I mean, I can go in and get the best IP that ever was on paper, and it looks amazing, and it meets the child's needs, and I've ruled out every single area of the child's suspected disability, and we've developed the IEP beautifully with the supports and services, accommodations and goals that the kiddo needs. And then the next school year, you know, nobody did it. It wasn't implemented. Half the team doesn't even know how to do half the stuff that's in there. So that's why, again, I always recommend, parents, that you have your progress on goals meetings every quarter, and you hold them accountable by going over every single goal, by making them give you data collection to prove that they're working on your child's goals, because half the time, they're not even working on the goals. And you can bet right now in a virtual model, they're not working on goals. Okay, violation of the IP. Are they implementing the accommodation? Probably not. Violation of the IP. This is what you have to do at your progress on goals meeting, is enforce your IP implementation. And every time they don't implement something, parents, that is a violation of your child's IP, which is a legally binding document, which you can file a complaint with the State Board of Education, the State Department of Ed. No matter if you're in California or not, you can file a complaint with your state for non-implementation of your child's IP for any of those things. So again, the responsibility falls on you, parents, to know these things, have a great knowledge, and be fully informed on your parent rights, how to implement your parent rights, how to hold your IP team accountable, know what to ask for, know how to get it. And that's why I offer these Wednesday Night Town Hall meetings. That's why I do my Monday Morning Facebook Lives, and that's why I offer the Parent Monthly Membership Brigade. And I congratulate all of you parents that have taken advantage of joining the monthly parent brigade, because your parents, you might be getting the tip of the iceberg and hearing me talk on a Wednesday night or a Monday Morning Facebook Live, but there's no way you're going to know how to implement it or how to do what I'm talking about, because you need more coaching, more help with how to prepare for your IP meetings, what to say when they try to confuse you or delay you or argue with you, or, you know, delay your IP meetings, or, you know, whatever tricks they have up their sleeve or tactics they're going to use on you. And you need coaching from an advocate. And today, more than ever, parents have to be working with an advocate, or your child is not going to receive an education. They just aren't in this virtual world with everything that's going on with education. You're just not. So, I mean, I've had parents that hired me when their kiddo was in grade school, and they kept me all the way until their child graduated high school. And why? Because that parent didn't want to learn how to advocate. So they just paid me for years and years and years and years and years so that I could make sure that their child got the IP that they needed. And you can do that. That's an option. But, you know, what's the problem with that is, most kiddos on an IP, they're going to need continued support after high school, guys. And so you're just going to move on to some other government agency, and guess what? They have their laws, and they don't do their job either. I can guarantee you, they're all the same. The regional centers are the same. The Department of Disability Services are the same. They're all the same. So if you don't learn how to advocate for your child, and then they go on to, after high school, to a real-life situation, how are they going to be supported to go to college or get a job skills, to get a job? So advocacy, learning advocacy is so important. And if you don't put the work in to learn it, you're not going to learn it. You're just not. Because it's a lot, but you can learn it. I learned it, and I'm teaching tons of moms in my parent brigade how to become powerful advocates as well. We've already had great success with a lot of the members. I've had a mom receive compensatory education, guys, more than one mom, several moms. They were awarded compensatory ed from March, April, May, and June, guys. All of their OT and all of their speech being made up. That's a whole heck of a lot of time. And guess what? Everybody's telling me, "They denied me. They denied me. They denied me." Yep, because you didn't go through the appeal process and the steps. I teach seven steps in my parent brigade membership. And when you go through those seven steps, you will probably be successful in getting whatever you are advocating to get, because it's the same seven steps that I do when I advocate. And I'm very successful in getting kids the services they need and the IEP program that they need as well. So it takes work. It takes commitment. It takes time, and you need to work with an advocate, unless you want to take years and years and years. Because I had to teach myself, back when Chanel was five, four, five, six, when I was learning to advocate, I didn't have an advocate that came along and said, "Hey, Valerie, I have a parent monthly membership that you can join, and I'll teach you everything and cut it all down into layman's terms and just hand it to you on a silver platter and tell you steps and how to do it." I never had that, you guys. I studied day after day after day. It was basically putting myself through a college degree, because I researched on the web. I read every book I could get my hands on. I went to every conference I could go to. I worked with other advocates and attorneys, and I taught myself special education law. And that's how I got where I am today. So unless you join a program, an intensive program, or work with an advocate, it's going to take you years. And our kids don't have years, especially now in this situation. So I really encourage any moms that haven't joined the monthly membership yet, it is, you'll never be able to join, to work with an advocate at the price that I'm offering for this monthly membership to work with me. There's no advocate in the United States that is offering this low of a price. So I encourage all parents to do it, because I just, and I'm offering it because I care about all of the moms that are struggling today. And it's just, you know, a mess. It's a mess, and we need to do something about it. And that's why I want to empower as many parents as we can, because they shouldn't be able to get away with this, guys. They are breaking IDEA law every single day, probably hundreds of thousands of times across the United States a day, because they're not implementing the IP, and they're violating IDEA every day for those 7 million kids across the nation. And that's the state of special education today. That's the bottom line. So that's my spiel for tonight, guys. So who has questions or comments?
Hi, Valerie.
Hi, Bonnie.
How do you know that they're actually implementing the latest best practices? Because I felt that the districts hold them to a certain level of services when they could be implementing more. And where would you find a source for the latest best practices?
So are you referring to best practices in behavior?
Yes.
Behavior dimension. Okay. So that would be a discussion that you would have with your autism specialist? And you would want to look at your behavior intervention plan, the last functional behavior assessment that was conducted? And if one hasn't been conducted in two or three years, another one should be conducted, an FBA? And then having them show you the data collection? So having them give you the weekly, I think you get the weekly data collection. I'm pretty sure I asked them to send it to you on a regular basis. Are you getting it?
Not since this COVID.
Oh, yeah. Well, they should still be taking it, though. They should still be taking data collection on his behaviors every day on virtual schooling. And there should be an ABA person there. Somebody should still be taking the data collection. So, you know, they can't use the excuse that, "Oh, now we're in virtual, so now we can't do this or this or this in the IP." No, that's not correct. They can still do everything. They're still held accountable to doing everything. So it's looking at the data collection and working with your autism specialist to understand how to read the data collection. Ask them, "Is he improving in the goals?" Because if you look at your behavior intervention plan, there's all those goals that they talk about it every annual, and that's how you tell if he's making progress. Because if he's not making progress, that means it's not working. But you could also ask them, you know, about this new behavior best practices or the evidence-based practices regulation that the whole team needs to be trained on. Everybody, not just the ABA people, everybody that works with your son should be trained in evidence-based practices. So, and these evidence-based practices, they have, you know, requirements for who's training it, and it has to be a reputable person. So, you know, but there is new theories that are out now, which have pulled away from a lot of the ABA or discrete trials kind of thinking to a much more relational basis and more of having the student lead and guide what they are interested in, what they want to learn. And so it's not as rigid and, you know, discrete trial-like. So, but it's still a behavioral intervention. It's still evidence-based practices, but it's just a little different than the more old-school ABA theories. So that's really the newest thing when it comes to behavior.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. How would you know it's the latest practice? Because you and I worked with an autism specialist that was very resistant to change when he was in the seventh grade.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. And well, and that's the problem, is that if you don't have an IP team that is willing to work with you, willing to do the best thing for your child, has their little pride games going on, and, you know, all that, then that has to be demolished. That has to be addressed. And you know how we did that, you know? I had to go to the director. I had to work outside the IP meeting. We had to go to dispute resolution meetings. I had to write complaints. And so those are higher-level advocacy steps that sometimes you have to take if you're not going to get results in your IP meeting.
Right. That's what happened, yes.
And that's what has to happen sometimes, because sometimes your IP team just ain't going to do it. And so when that happens, then you got to go to the more advanced level advocacy steps. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
How's he doing?
Well, he's...
Hey, Joey!
Say hi.
Hi.
What's your name?
Hi, Joey.
Hi.
How's it going? Pretty good?
What's your name?
Valerie. You don't remember me? I know, I haven't seen you in a long time.
Hi, Valerie.
Hi, Joey. Hi. Done with school, huh? Done with school today.
Yeah, they're actually going back two days next week for half a day.
Oh, good. Awesome. Yeah, they're starting to open up a little now.
They're going to give it a whirl, so we'll see what happens.
Good. I'm so glad to hear that. So glad. Yeah, it's been long enough, eight months, for kiddos being out of school.
They've tried three different times, so hopefully this is it.
Yeah, hopefully. Nice to see you, Bonnie.
Nice to see you, too. Thanks.
Anybody else have a question or comment?
So Valerie, yeah, that's great news. Now, you know, I think we also have to ask anybody in the classroom, the aides should be trained, you know, all the aides that work in the classroom, because they all still work with, you know, our kids.
All staff.
It would have to be the speech OT, you know, adaptive PE.
Yes.
You know, anybody that works with the children, you know? And I always like to take it a step further and say, you know, are these people also, you know, especially OT and speech, are they trained in working with kids with autism?
Yes, well, but they don't necessarily, there's not a requirement in IDEA that says they have to have knowledge or training for kids with autism. But now they have this, and evidence-based practices is, you know, basically specializes for kids with autism. Evidence-based practices, although it works for all students. But it definitely comes out of autism, autism behavior interventions. So, yeah, that's why I'm so happy about it, because before, I could never say, "I want APE, speech OT, you know, and the physical therapist to be trained in evidence-based practices." I could never say that before. I could only say that I want the teacher trained.
Yes.
And the aides trained. Now we can have every single person that ever works with your child at any time, they must be trained.
Well, that's huge.
It is.
Because, you know, they used to just blame the child for all their behaviors, and they never took any blame for anything. They always just said it was your child that has the behaviors, not that they didn't know how to deal with the behavior, which probably escalated the behavior, because they didn't know how to deal with the behavior. So, no, this is huge, huge, momentous.
It is. It is. I'm just, this is good news. It's good news.
Well, I definitely, at our IEP on the 14th, I definitely want to have it brought up, put on our agenda.
Oh, yes, because, you know, I'm starting to write complaints now for all of my clients, and this is going to be part of the complaint, because I know they haven't done it. They're not going to do it. And so, unless, so that's why, parents, that's why I'm telling you. You need to find out, and if they don't, you need to file a compliance complaint. This is a way for you to hold your IP team accountable to, you know, doing what they need to do for your child. And behavior and evidence-based practices will help your child so much, because they'll know better how to work with your kid if they're trained.
Because this is the reason they're not learning.
Yes.
This is it, right here.
I know. I know.
You know, and I really want us to ask the teacher, have you been trained, you know? Have you been trained to the teacher?
I know.
I bet she hasn't.
Well, supposedly she has, but I don't know. I want to see it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, I want you to look it up Liz, on the website. Because that's what they told us. They said you can look up credentials of teachers on the district website.
On their, on the district website. Okay, I'm going to do that definitely.
That's what Lori told me.
To get ready for the IEP.
Yes, please do it before we go. Because I want to really know what her credentials say.
Okay. Did you get my email?
Yes, and I forwarded your letter back to Lori in response to her email.
Oh, you did? So, it was fine the way it was?
I made a couple little changes and that's it. I sent it.
Oh, okay. Because I was ranting and raving and I thought, oh, she's going to take off so much of it.
No, it was all perfect, great information. And that's what I, that's what we need, details.
Okay, good.
Specifics. No, it was really good.
Oh, so you sent it then? It's sent. Oh, perfect.
I CC'd you.
Perfect, okay. Wonderful.
No, it was a great response.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Real quick Valerie, so who should we, if we don't have an IP meeting coming up, who should we email asking if the entire team is trained in evidence-based practice? Should we email the program specialist?
I would, if you have your IP meeting coming up, I would ask it right at the IEP meeting.
I don't have one coming up.
Oh, you don't have one? I thought you did.
No, I don't.
Okay, so yes, you're going to email the program specialist.
Okay, just ask.
And you can CC the principal.
Oh, okay.
Because those are always the bosses. Remember, at the district level, it's the program specialist. And then, of course, they have higher admins over them. They have a coordinator than a director, than the Selba director over the program specialist. But you work with the program specialist. So, you would email the program specialist and then you would CC the administrator because the administrator would be the one too who would coordinate the training, you know? I mean, it could come from the district level, like the district could say, okay, we're having an evidence-based practices training. Principals, make sure that all of your teams that work with kids on IPs must come to this and even general-led teachers. But I know that most of these districts have not done that.
Of course not. Of course not. You know, they're not going to do anything unless you really ask them and put it, you know, put them on the spot. So, what is the code again? I just want to make sure I wrote it down.
Okay, it's 56366.1 and then in parentheses, small a.
Okay.
And that's education code, California education code. And then you need to say, which was amended by A B, a capital A, capital B, 1172.
Okay.
And that is specific to this training, mandatory, mandatory training. And they have to show verification that every single person took that training.
Okay.
Yep.
And I have another quick question. For progress on goals, does that typically happen in an IP meeting? Or is that just over Zoom with the teacher? Like, what should be expected?
No, progress on goals happens at every annual IEP. So, at your IEP, the agenda for every single annual IEP is you first look at present levels of performance, where your child is at right now. Where are they performing at in writing, in reading, in math, in reading comprehension, in speech, in communication, in behavior? And you'll see it in your IP. It's all those different gross motor on and on. Okay, so those are present levels where your child's performing right now in all those different areas. Then you look at progress on goals. So, last year's goals, they look at, did your child meet last year's goals? And that's when they go through every single goal and they say, they made progress. They did not meet the goal, or yes, they made the goal. One of those things are going to be checked. And that's progress on goals. That happens at every annual. It's mandatory for every once a year.
Annual, how about before the annual?
So, that's why I say you need to call an IEP meeting during the progress on goals report time, which is the same time as report cards come out. So, it's quarterly when report cards come out. That's when you will get in the mail or they email you and it says, progress on goals report. And so, you're going to expect that that benchmark for whatever quarter that is, that benchmark better have been met showing that your child is moving towards reaching that annual goal. So, that's a progress on goals report. So, during that time, you can request an IEP meeting. So, then you go to a formal legal meeting where they have to take notes and write an IEP. And you ask every single person that's in charge of those goals, has my child met that benchmark? And then you say, I'm requesting that you bring me data collection, work samples, informal testing quizzes, any kind of evidence that's going to substantiate that they met that benchmark.
Okay, thank you.
And believe me, they don't like that because then they have to go back and prove to you that they worked on the goal.
Oh, yeah. I mean, especially now, like for my son, they're not working on math goal. And I reached out to the teacher almost a week and a half ago, asking her, we're not working on math goals. We only do, you know, and she hasn't replied back at all.
That's, so she put in writing that she's violating the law?
I asked her, I said, we're not working on his math goal. Can we squeeze it in somehow when we do the one-on-one language arts session? And I'm still waiting to hear from her, but I have it in writing. I'm calling her up.
That's amazing that she put it in writing. So, she doesn't even realize that's a violation of California education.
Well, because she has math Zoom optional sessions, so if you want to attend it, you can. So, obviously, I can attend. I have other kids. I have other Zooms, you know? So, but yeah, so she might say.
But so, she should have reworded that though. She should have said, we're working on math goals during the optional Zoom math time. So, your child might not get their goal worked on if they don't attend that optional Zoom work time.
I'm sure she'll say that. I'm sure she'll say that. So, what then? You can't really hold her accountable for that because
You want, yes, you can say, show me the data collection, work samples and informal testing quizzes that you're working on my son's math goals and how he's making progress. Yes.
Yeah, it's virtual. So, you know, we're going back November 9th, right?
No, I didn't know that.
It just came out last night, November 9th.
I thought they said they were just going to start opening certain holes in a week.
It just came out just last night, October 26th. All year-round children are going back October 26th and November 9th, everybody else.
But I talked to the director and she said she doesn't know if that's really going to happen.
So, they're just putting info just like that, just to keep parents quiet maybe?
I don't know. I talked to the director of special ed this morning.
Oh.
And she said that they want to, that's their plan. But, you know, all they have to do is say, because she said, we're getting down to where Riverside is the lower number. She said, but we're still not there yet. There's still like certain amount of points that they're not there yet. So, she said, it depends on, and if by then, we'll be out of the woods. That's what she said.
You never know.
But they do that a lot. Don't you remember how they flip-flopped like three or four times? We're opening, we're not opening, we're opening, we're not opening at the beginning of the school year?
Oh, yeah.
So, they send out stuff to parents all the time and then they change their minds.
That's why I don't want to get too excited about the November 9th.
I wouldn't. Yep.
Thank you.
So, what about when you're at the meeting, like my team, and they didn't give me the data and work samples that I requested? And then I told them that I can't see anything by this. And then you're sitting there in the IEP meeting and they're still explaining, well, this is the data that we have. I mean, what do you say at that point? Can I just say, well, guess what? I don't think he met the goal then because this is not sufficient data.
Yeah, you could challenge whether he's really met the goal because there's no evidence to prove it.
Good. So, that's what I'm going to do. All right, good. Well, that's what we're going to do in the next meeting because they still haven't given me anything. So, I don't think he's truly met those goals, especially looking at him here in the house. I don't think he's really made progress the way they're saying he has.
Yeah, I don't think so either Angie. I don't think so either. It's going to be part of the, I'm going to add to your compliance complaint that they didn't work on the goals because they never showed proof that they did, that they didn't implement the accommodations.
Okay.
It's all going to be in the compliance complaint. And then they're going to have to prove that they implemented the accommodations, that they worked on the goals to the state. And they're not going to be able to prove it because they don't have any evidence of it.
Yeah, they don't. Yeah.
Yeah, they're going to be found in lots of violations once I get that compliance complaint done.
And I found in this weekly data that they're presenting me with, which really isn't great data either. I don't know if you've read through any of it, but she actually, the speech teacher actually told them last week he could not be in his stock and could not use the bouncy seat and she put it in writing. And I just realized that because I just read through it.
Yeah, that's another complaint that she denied him using his sensory tools.
Good. Okay.
So, and you can bet they, you know, I don't believe that whatever training they went to. I mean, maybe it was because Jerome knew it, but they're not the district. So, they probably went to some Mickey Mouse training that wasn't
Boozy trainings. Yeah. Yeah. And I don't know if the general ed teacher went because she doesn't have time for nothing.
Right. And I'm sure all of them didn't go exactly. So, I'm going to
You're going to send a letter?
I'm going to ask for the verification that they went to this, yes.
Good, 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 good.
Yes, I'm going to do it for every single one of my cases. Because I can't wait to catch them all for not doing it because I know they didn't.
Great. And then what she says, I don't have time to do that. Well, sorry. I'm going to have to make time.
Yep, yep.
Hi Valerie, I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Redora, I, last year, I mean, the end of the year last year, like December, I got a progress report. Or I don't know, I think it's this report card, it says, all for December, or it says, not met. And then I asked for the teacher, his old progress report since she wouldn't give me the new one. So, I asked for like the one last year, she has a copy or something. And then all of a sudden, it has like different writing on the December progress report. It says, because the old one, it says, not met, not met on all of it. And then now, all of a sudden, it has like a bunch of like details on it, like, oh, he's able to do this, he's able to do that. And I'm like, when did that happen?
So, but, so you're saying that it was another one? It wasn't the same progress report for that time? And it was like another quarter progress report afterwards?
No, because he didn't, he only went to school till December.
Well, she can't send one progress report and then send another one for the same date. That's completely different.
But it's all for, it says December 2019.
And they both say December 2019.
Yeah, and then she sent me a recent one. I asked for like, you know, that she has a copy of the one last.
Meet yourself, please, Liz.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Yeah, so I have one from what they mailed me from his old school. It's from December 2019. And then I asked her for a copy if she has one from, you know, from last year of his old one, old school. And then it totally says different things.
So, you're telling me that they sent you the two progress reports for the same date?
Yeah, December, it says December 2019.
Okay, well, that's a violation too.
How come it's different from the other one? Like, how is it?
Because they're covering their ass.
Yeah, like, how is it any different if the same progress report, I mean, the same school, he didn't go anywhere else?
Why do you think it is, Redora?
Of course, they're trying to cover it.
Yes, that's why.
Trying to hide stuff. Like, oh, yeah, we tried to work on it, but I don't think they worked on that because he doesn't know how to do all those, they said that he, oh, he could do it.
So, again, you know, you asked for proof to show evidence of what they're saying.
Yeah, like I told you too, she even said, oh, we are not working on his goals since we're not in the classrooms. Because remember, I told you that I asked for curriculum specifically for his goal and she said, we're not in the class.
Wow. Did she put that in writing?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay, then we can write a compliance complaint.
Redora, they're just screwing you completely.
I know. So annoying.
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to start working with Redora now soon because she's having an IP coming up.
Thank God. And tear them up.
Yes, finally. I was like, oh, my gosh.
Yep. Yeah, I can't wait either. I mean, the stuff you guys tell me are just, it's just so shocking. Just shocking.
Well, they let, they allow child abuse in their districts. So, these are the same district that abused Julian.
Yes, yes, exactly. Yeah, Temecula is like that too. Temecula allows child abuse in their grade schools as well.
Abused?
Two clients there of their kiddos were abused in the class.
Do you mean physically abused?
Physically abused.
Oh, my God.
I know. Bruises, scratches, marks.
And how do you prove such a thing? Like, if my child is non-verbal, I can never find, I mean, I would, I mean, how would I know?
You take pictures and then you know it happened at school, didn't have it at home.
Behaviors. Always look at their behaviors.
Yep. They'll act different. They'll act different.
I ignored mine. Like, I forced him to like go to school. I was like, oh, my gosh, I hope he doesn't hate me forever.
Yeah, their behavior, but, you know, these kids in Temecula, there was marks on their bodies.
So sad, so sad. These are the people that are supposed to be protecting our kids and we trust them, you know? When we drop them off and they're the ones that are, that need help the most.
I know. I just
They just tell you, oh, I didn't do it. I don't know how that happened.
Oh, we don't know. We don't know what happened there. Oh, really? Okay, well, I'm going to call the police. So, that's what I did to my, for my one client in Temecula. So, the child already got abused once. They moved him to another school site. And then they hired me when they moved him. So, now they're at a new school site, they hire me and then they, and then they somehow he hurt himself during the day. So, they, the dad, they called the mom to come pick him up because he was crying. And the mom went to pick him up and then the dad called me and tells me what happened. And I said, do not let the mom pick him up. You keep the mom there with this child. You call the police and you make a report that your son was harmed at school. And that's how you start, you know, stopping it. Because you don't just go pick up your kid and go, okay, I'm going to take him home and brush it under the rug and nothing happens. No, you hold them accountable. And so, the police came, I was on the phone and a report was taken. And they were cited for, you know, it's their responsibility, your child is under their care. If they get hurt at school, they're responsible for it. Even if it is innocent, say they fell down off the jungle gym or whatever. Okay, well, that's still their responsibility. But this case was magically, this kid kept getting hurt all the time. We're coming home with bruises and scratches and marks on their head and all this crazy stuff. And it's like, they're like, he doesn't hurt himself at home. So, that's why we called the police and we wrote, and we also called Child Protective Services. So, there are many things you can do in those situations.
Yeah, and CTC, put a complaint into CTC. But Valerie, the superintendent Chula Vista is an ex-cop, so that's why he gets away with everything. Trust me.
Disgusting.
It's disgusting. I had the police come to the house. I did everything. I complained to the I had the police come to the house, I did everything, I complained to the speech people, the, I complained to the CTC, I complained, I did it all, nothing ever happened.
But you guys sued them.
I'm in the middle of the lawsuit right now.
Yeah, so you are doing something. Because, you know, they can't, they can't deny, it's not just one kid, this is lots of kids, right? There's, there's several of you moms doing it, right?
My story's separate from the other mom's stories, but yeah, there's a lot of kids being abused in that district.
Right, right, so they have to look at that, that it's on an isolated case, that, that's evidence too, you know? But it's a pattern.
Yep, yep.
Anybody else have a question or comment? So everybody's got the info, right? And you're gonna, you're going to write an email, or you're going to ask for this in your IEP, for, to, for to show the verification that they completed this course? And if they didn't, guys, then you're gonna write a letter to your State Department, and you're going to say, "It's a complaint, because your school district did not complete this required evidence-based practices training according to that." And you guys can look it up, I'll, I'll post this actually on, on the Brigade website, okay? I'll post it on the Brigade website, so you'll have all the information you need. Okay?
I'm assuming this is for the NPS schools as well?
Yes, NPSs, charter schools, public schools, everybody, everybody.
All right, that's good.
Yep, yep. Everybody that teaches kids. Now, private schools are the only ones, private schools are exempt from everything. But yeah, non-public schools, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. All right, guys, well, you guys, take care, it was great seeing everybody, and I'll see you guys on Monday morning for Facebook Live at 10 o'clock.
Thank you, Valerie.
Okay, good night, guys.